I'd like to call to order the special, the August 11, 2022, special meeting of the Pittsburgh Conservation Commission at 6:17 PM. And we'll jump right into it. The goal of this meeting is to discuss enforcement protocol. And, okay. So, we have the enforcement protocol. I think, at first, I would just like to talk about what we have in place already. And then what Commissioner Donnelly has recommended, and then we can, we need to talk, we have specifics. Is that okay, Mike?
Yeah, that sounds good. I think good, just for, since we just did start the meeting in the recording, just to make clear, we have a quorum here for Conservation Commission members. Mark Christian and Joyce Jacobs here in person, and yourself, Tracy, and Ralph Baker virtually, which makes four. So, we're good.
Okay.
Do you want to get right into what?
And we are recording. We are recording this meeting.
Yes.
Okay. So, what do we have in place so far? We do have, we did make a motion to adopt the Committee on Violations and Enforcement. So, that's in place. And that was at the recommendation of the city solicitor that we create that committee. And so, we also have the bylaws. Right?
Mm-hmm.
And does anyone else have anything they'd like to add? We have the order, we have an order, and we have an enforceable Order of Conditions document that needs to be voted upon, you know, voted on by the committee. Mike, you recall years ago that we sat down with Tim and went through it?
Do you mean the protocol?
No, it was the updated Order of Conditions.
Oh, the boilerplate. Yeah, the additional boilerplate items you were talking, special condition.
An updated one. We sat down with Tim years ago, went through it. I think at some point, we should, everybody should review it, and then we can make a motion to adopt it, you know, make changes, whatever you want, and
Okay.
May I ask, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, this Committee on Violations and Enforcement, did, have, have they ever met?
No.
Well, no. And who was it? Brian? I'd have to check back through my notes, who was on that?
Yeah, I remember Brian offered to chair it, but
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think, Ralph, you weren't on that, because
No, I opted, I opted not to be on it.
That's true.
I've got too many things already.
I think what we ended up thinking that it was going to have to be something that was fluid, because, for example, the slogan violation, you know, Mark and Mary had to recuse themselves. And so, I think this, the committee has to be, we have to be clear, you know, on that some people may have to recuse themselves, because we live in the, you know, in a municipality.
So, is it necessary to have this committee at all? If they don't meet, they haven't done any enforcement, and members have to come and go, maybe we should look at Mike Donnelly's new recommendations, and that would kind of
I think that's
change how we address enforcement rather than by subcommittee.
Well, it was, the committee was supposed to be working with, it was, the committee would be working with the city solicitor's office as needed on the violation. So, it was more of a path to the city solicitor's office, you know, to keep them included as our legal counsel.
Okay, so then take the other route, then maybe we formalize that, and say, as a subcommittee, you need to meet four times a year, you need to report to the commission as to violations that are being worked on, appoint or ask for volunteers, and then substitute as needed if there are conflicts. So, kind of formalize it, so
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Four times a year, I got that part. What came after that, Joyce?
Four times a year, however many members need to be on this enforcement committee, we should formalize that. So, which four, which, you know, how many members did, did, was it previously? Three?
Michael, didn't we decide if it needed to be, it didn't need to have a quorum?
Probably not.
Be careful there, because I think subcommittees of a board
Still need a quorum?
I believe, but
All right, so that means you need four members
Yeah.
on a subcommission. So, so I'm not sure that that's complicating things.
I think Joyce's initial point is, is well taken, though, because, I mean, maybe just as a group, the commission as a group can, can be their own committee on enforcement, you know?
Well, yeah, we might be
No way. You know, Tracy, I spoke with Mike prior to the meeting, we were just sitting here, and I met with a gentleman, a chairperson in West Shamath down the Cape.
Yeah.
And they actually have a delegated enforcement powers. And they did, that town is a little different than here. They have three officer natural resource people. They have enforcement powers. Badge-wearing, green police that do the, they go to court, they do the ticketing, they have it all. Since they've done away with the Natural Resource Division, they found it too time-consuming and too cumbersome, so they passed it on to the city agent. Now, in West Shamath, they have a full-time city agent, and he is, actually, she is, you know, a badge-wearing Conservation Commission agent for the town. She serves the papers, she goes to court. They have a very strong continuity between their town. They don't have a city council, they have a Board of Selectmen. And when they serve a citation or a violation, there's a lot of continuity between the other departments, and they just shut the project down. There'll be no building permits, there'll be nothing until you justify, you know, make good on what we've issued you. So, it's a little bit different, but it all boils down, they have a person that has the, one person has the enforcement powers.
Well, that's, that's very interesting, Mark, but to be honest, I always thought Mike O'Hara had been designated our, basically, our enforcement officer. Was, am I incorrect about that?
That's kind of how it has worked over the years, Ralph, yeah.
So, you may not be badge-wearing, but you, I always took it that you were, you know, in charge of pursuing these things, whether, you know, entailed interacting with the city solicitor or whomever in the city to make, make things happen.
Yeah, yeah, and when Tim was here, too, back decades ago.
Mm-hmm, okay.
That was one of my questions, is who's going to give the tickets, right? So, if we have these tickets
Well, Michael supplied a copy, an example. Oh, did I give it back to you, Mark? Got it. I think this was included in what he had handed out. It's, it's just a ticket, you know, from a ticket book. Says City of Pittsburgh Inspection Services, Notice of Violation of Bylaws or Regulations, you know, date of the notice, name of the offender, address. You have been observed violating such-and-such, be specific on what bylaw or regulation. And the fine for this offense is, you know, dollar sign, you fill in the blank. You have the following alternatives: choose to pay the above fine within 21 days, or if you decide to contest, make a written request for a noncriminal hearing within 21 days of the date of this notice. Now, the city, we should say, is mentioned, is also in the beginning phases of adopting a 40U, like Mass General Law 40U, which is a little bit different, which would, violations would go to, an appeal would go to a hearing officer, just like you're appealing a parking ticket, it goes to the parking agent. But there has to be a separate ordinance adopted in order to do that, to establish that hearing officer.
And also, and bear in mind that Pittsburgh is more than twice the population of West Shamath. They have a full-time agent who has a clerical assistant.
Yeah, but it's an affluent place, Mark.
And what is more affluent, I'm sorry, and
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely. A much higher tax base and so forth.
So, Mike, is this a task that you would be able to perform? You know, Mark noted, you know, your time is sparing now.
Well, we can issue tickets, I think, and send, certainly send the violation notice, like referred to in Michael's saying.
Yes.
Sure. I mean, that's, that's part of what we do, part of what this job
All right, so to Dr. Baker's point, then, we can assume that you can act as our agent.
Well, yeah.
An enforcement agent, even.
And we've sent out a number of violation notices on, you know, the appropriate DEP form, you know, quite a bit of them over the years, right? It's just a matter of the person ignores it, or is not being particularly reactive to that, you know?
And that's what we want to address in what Mr. Donnelly presented, yes.
So, Michael, do you think that this proposed enforcement protocol would strengthen your hand working on our behalf if we were to adopt it? Or would you have suggestions to modify it in some way?
Well, I think if you were all looking at Michael's, number one, number two is, is fine, verbal notice. For, I'm a little unsure whether that, where that fits. Concom issues a finding of made, minor or major violation after discussion. So, you give the violator notice, whether it's verbal or written, in number three. This is a violation, but you don't get to that level of detail, or that determination isn't made until number four. And we let the commission as a whole issue whether it's a minor or a major. And I guess what's, what would be the difference?
So, maybe we should swap those two, four really becomes three, and then three becomes four in that order?
Well, I think it's good to put the person on notice, there is a violation. And maybe it makes sense that rather than one person making a determination, that it'd be the commission as a whole determining whether it's minor or major. I guess I'm not sure of what direction, what fork in the road do you follow? What, what further enforcement activity takes place if it's only minor as opposed to a major?
Well, and I think that was part of Commissioner Donnelly's point, is we kind of need to determine, or we'll learn after we go along, what is minor and what is major.
Okay, all right. We'll go into number five, violator files the appropriate request for determination or applicability to a full notice of intent. And actually, I, that need not be the only two options, because I know Tim has mentioned numerous times, if there's a violation, an applicant can just, you know, file a plan, file a remediation plan, file a wetlands restoration plan, or file some sort of document saying how he's, the person's going to address the violation. Doesn't necessarily need to be one of those two options, either an RDA or an NOI. So, going on number five, and continuing on, any violation that is determined to be major, issued a violation notice, this, well, it's also Okay, I was thinking that number three, the written notice required would be the violation notice that we have already issued numerous times.
Right, so number three really would be verbal notice optional or written notice required, and state the violation, but issue the directive, we may not be prepared to issue a directive at that time.
That's a good point. Okay, I get the distinction. So, we just send a written notice in the form of a letter.
Which could just be, contact the agent.
Yeah.
And then you can go now to step even five, that they have to file a notice of intent or a request for determination, or, but you've made contact with them, that something is wrong, here's the violation, please contact the agent.
So, Joyce, I think if, what I'm hearing you suggest is that number three, where it says, "and issue a directive," that that issue a directive really belongs in a later step?
Exactly. I, I don't know that we're ready at that point to issue a directive, we just need to notify them of the violation.
Yep.
I could see striking that, state the violation, cease and desist the activity that is causing the violation, attend the next meeting.
So, it would really be
Attend the next meeting.
Right, and, and you have to contact the agent, reply to this office, Michael O'Hara, and
Or whomever.
you know, all that other thing, and you would tell him either come to a meeting, file a notice of intent.
I think we should put a time on that, like
Yep, contact within
Within 24 hours.
Yeah.
Or, you know, within, after 24 hours, it's now $300 a day fine.
What if it's a weekend? Well, wait, before going that far, I mean, later on, Michael was saying, $300 fine if it's determined to be a major violation. So, when you're at number, stage number three, maybe you're not at that place yet. I agree with the putting a time limit, respond
Okay.
within X number of hours, you know, 48, 72, whatever.
Two business days.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, something doesn't have to
And attend the next meeting, period. Let's get you in the room, or the virtual room, discuss the issue. Then we go on to number four, after examining the situation, along with hopefully the violator who's there, commission issues a finding of either minor or major violation.
Yep.
Number five, violator files the appropriate, I think a choice, either request for determination, or a notice of intent, or some kind of work schedule or plan, or what you are going to do to alleviate the situation, to remedy the situation. It need not be one of those formal DEP forms, the RDA or NOI.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And then number about, okay, on to number six, any violation that is determined to be major violation, shall be issued a violation notice and assessed a fine of 300. Now, I see a couple of, do you want that fine to be assessed while the person who has been before the commission and has filed a, a plan, this is what I'm going to do to alleviate it, you still want a fine, while that remediation is being performed?
Well, I know it's Mike's intent, I believe, that if you committed a major violation, you still need to go through all the steps, but you should be assessed at least the one penalty.
Mm-hmm.
If determined to be a major violation.
Mm-hmm.
Mark, do you think that that was Mike's intent?
I guess, yes. He's pretty adamant about issuing a fine to get their attention.
And then, and then number seven, is stepping up the pressure.
Mm-hmm, including failure to pay fine, referred to DEP.
And a daily fine, says a daily fine.
Now, Madam Chair, I think this was another point that you indicated, that we should put a timeframe on
Yeah.
when do we start, how many days do we give them to start the process of remediation, or plan to fix whatever the violation was?
I would, I would like to see a plan within, you know, X number of days. Or, you know, but keeping in mind that if it's, if they destroyed a wetland and it's April, they may not be able to get that wetland, you know, that work done. That some, you know, some remediation may be time-sensitive, more time-sensitive.
You know, I, I think that's right. It all depends, you know, it's the middle of the winter, you know, what can you do immediately? Not a lot.
Yeah.
You don't want to make the situation worse.
In the meantime, can I share something, if I share my screen? Because I looked up the existing wetlands by law in the meantime, and I gotta shift things around in order to get the share screen. That one, and share. So, I'm sorry, you've, the persons who, folks are right here, cannot see it.
Yep.
Oh, good, that comes up fine. So, you see that, that's in the existing Chapter 178 ordinance, and that was adopted, sorry, I need to move some of these. Changed in 2008, and then
2012.
2012, amended March of 2012. I mean, that's kind of jive.
That's actually what, that's in, already in our ordinance. So, why don't, if this, if this enforcement protocol is something that we're, are we proposing it to be a part of this Wetlands Protection Ordinance? Or, or like a separate policy?
I think the, I think it's better, well, it does say policy, doesn't it? But it is a, it is also a, a formal ordinance, one that was adopted
But there's strategic and there's salsa.
By city council back, it says, a decade ago, 2008, more than that. So, I don't think we want to necessarily, if we fiddle with this, then this has to go back to the city council. I think it's easier to just
But, yeah.
treat it as a policy, like, like Michael
Right, so what I was, where I was going with that, if that's the case, and I think you're right, Michael, if, where I was going with that is to simply say that this enforcement protocol should make reference to this Section 5.2 of the Wetlands Protection Ordinance, which already, already calls for this, this kind of penalty.
I was thinking the exact same thing.
So, then if it, if it's in there, then, you know, if somebody objects to it, we can say, hey, we're just, we're just formalizing a way of, of enforcing what's already in our ordinance.
Mm-hmm, okay. I can slightly amend Michael's enforcement protocol to, to just copy and paste, or refer to, like you say, Ralph, Section 5.2.
I think we can, I think we can do it now, and then vote on it, unless, unless it needs to be, I don't know, in the, in the docket for a while before we can vote on it.
We can certainly refer it to the next meeting, and have the Michael can have the, you know, the, whatever, you know, the updated protocol in our, our packet for the next meeting, so everybody, and we can vote on it.
I think that's, in fairness to the person who, who, you know, wrote out this policy, to do it
And also, I see that in B, in B in Section 5.2, it actually refers to the time stated on said ticket. So, it sounds like, rather than having to stipulate an exact time in the policy,
Yeah.
we can make that, you know, you, the agent, can make that decision based on what time of year it is and the circumstances, and put in such-and-such a date.
And right, I think that you can fill in the blank on this ticket that has the header, City of Pittsburgh Inspection Services, right, respond by, or pay this fine by.
Yeah.
But I also think that we want to, leaving the timeframe in there is, is not necessarily a bad idea, because then that gives us some consistency on how we address violations, rather than leaving it an open book. Because then one violator might get a, you know, they may say, well, how come they got treated differently than I did? Everybody gets 48 hours to respond. Maybe in the Commissioner Donnelly's Item 7, the subsequent violation, we can reference as according to Wetlands Act, Section 5.2, you know, daily fines or other fines could be assessed in if failure to pay original fine corrective action was not handled, or an approved remediation plan. So, just add that in, which then takes into account, maybe the timeframe that says, okay, we're going to give you till June to fix this, and it's February now. Somehow, we just
So, Joyce, how about trying to restate that in a way that actually could be written into this protocol?
So, Item 7 maybe could say, subsequent violations. Refer to Section 5.2 of the Wetlands Act. Additional fines shall be assessed for including failure to pay the initial fine, because we've now agreed that if they have a major violation, they're going to get a $300 fine. That corrective action, well, additional fines, corrective action has not been approved by the Conservation Commission. And that's where we could include the time span.
Corrective action not approved, or not done?
Well, the corrective action in Commissioner Donnelly's, he's saying that we can take corrective action in two ways, and that's not really in reference to the $300 a day fine. That, that's kind of, he's saying, send it to DEP, or fine them $300 a day. So, let's not, I guess, get confused by the corrective action. The subsequent violations, which are in Section 5.2, could include failure to pay the previous $300 fine, not appearing before the commission with an approval plan, or not having actually corrected the violation.
Okay.
Because do I think, and, and this is where I'm not too sure, but just from some discussion that we've had, that remanding a violation to the mass DEP probably is not an option?
I think it's, I think it would be, refer the violation, it's an option. I don't know how timely you would, you would get
But that doesn't usually get remediation of the problem.
Not necessarily, but it's another
Tool?
Yeah, exactly. But, I mean, it takes
It would have to be a major one.
Right, right, because they're not coming out for piddly little things, or unless, you know, people are really, unless
But so, everybody keeps talking, so I don't want to get into specifics of, of projects, but everybody talks about the Sheldon Road being an extremely major violation. but everybody talks about the Sheldon Road being an extremely major violation, but nobody felt confident that DEP could help us with that. So that kind of, that part I don't understand. Maybe that's my learning curve, but.
I think they could. It's, it's a question of number, number of people they have in the central region now in the wetlands. And then they've lost a fair amount of people over the years. I mean, you have one person doing the reviews of notices of intent and it's, I mean-
They will come back, and I know this to be true, they will come back and say that it is weak city enforcement, you know. I have one question about that. We're addressing what happens when we don't address a major fine. What do we do when we write a ticket for a minor fine and it goes unchecked?
Well, I don't know that we specified that there was a ticket for a minor fine. In Mike Donnelly's proposal, it's only a ticket for a major violation.
Well, if you're saying we're treating this as a minor violation, violator, you know, go and fix the problem and, and we won't fine you. There's no action or inadequate action, then it kicks into the audit category.
Right. Okay. May I suggest this, this change of language under number seven?
Sure.
I like basically the, the addition that Joyce suggested. Refer to section 5.2 of the wetlands ordinance. A, refer, I think the word should be refer, not remand. I don't, I'm not sure if remand is the legal term. Just refer violation to mass DEP. B, assess a fine of $300 per day per certified letter. And then add this. Additional fines will be levied if violator, one, fails to submit plan for corrective action in stipulated period; two, fails to implement corrective action in stipulated period; and three, tickets fined, if, if tickets slash fines are not paid within the time stated on said ticket.
That sounds good.
Because the first one is you have to submit the plan in the stipulated period. And the second one is you have to implement the corrective action in the stipulated period. And then if you ignore the fines, you're going to get more of them.
Good point, Ralph. Yeah, I like that.
I think it's, it's also, I think, what Mike's intent was, even though he's not here to clarify it. But by, by putting this on next month's meeting, he can, he can either agree or not.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think it's respectful to him to give him a shot at reviewing it and-
Yeah.
-voting on it in a larger group. And maybe we can get Brian and Mary to be part of this, too.
Yeah, agreed.
So if you want, I can just type that up and send it-
Please.
-to, to you, Mike. And then you can, you can take a crack at revising the, what we've discussed tonight and distributing it to everyone.
That'll help. That'll save you a little time.
Michael, I may, I have a question, sort of a city question. That's the software that everything has to go through to get the permits.
Mm-hmm.
How can this be, can this be a part of that where we, you know, they lose some other permits for this violation?
Well, we were just talking about that, I think, before the meeting started, right?
Okay.
In, in other communities. There could be something added, I think, at least to flag a potential problem so that other departments are aware.
Oh, that's right.
It kind of, it kind of-
I mean, if they, if, wouldn't that take away, if they're in violate, you know, is it possible that if someone was in violation of the, you know, a wetlands, the ordinance or the Wetlands Protection Act, that, you know, we can let the building inspector be made aware so that they might not be able to get some other permits?
Right.
I mean, we need, we can put some teeth into this. Again, I know the license commission, everything else has to be in order to get that, or license. So, you know-
Well, an example I'm thinking of, okay, a house, is built, building permit is issued, houses in the process of being built on, let's say, Sheldon Road. In the meantime, commission notices they're in violation. You know, violation notice is sent, et cetera, et cetera. Not getting any action. Well, eventually the builder's going to want to get a certificate of occupancy. And if we, I get some COs, not for individual house lots, unless Mark, Building Commissioner Mark, is aware that that might be, hey, this is in a sensitive area, let's send it to planning for a checkoff. But we could easily do that. For any kind of commercial occupancy permit, oftentimes Mark will include me so that, okay, there's a commercial tenant who needed to go before the plan board for a site plan review. Did they comply with all their conditions before we issue the final certificate of occupancy? That's a good checklist. And we could do the same thing, I think, for situations like that.
I think that's an excellent idea, but I don't want it to be viewed by the other boards and, and commissions and departments as a way that they can negate our issuance of a violation, only that they would be informed so that they might themselves take action that would help to back us up.
Mm-hmm. Well, I don't think this would affect other boards or commissions. It's, well, the example that I gave, it's just, you know, dealing with the building department in City Hall. Or, okay, we'll give you a temporary CO. What are you going to do in order to remedy the violation that this board says you, you have?
Right, exactly.
And when push comes to shove, I mean, that it's a way to tweak someone. Could you hold someone's feet to the fire even though there is nothing structurally long with the space? It's habitable. It meets all the fire codes, electrical codes. Why can't I get a family in there? Because you're withholding the CO. But at least it gets, it's another tool.
That would be far more effective than a one-time fine or a fine.
Yeah.
Can't hear you, Mark.
You're saying it would be more effective than a one-time fine, you know, holding up, 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 closing?
Holding up a permit would have, carry much more weight than just paying a fine. Paying a fine just costs to do in business, you know, in my opinion.
I think, yeah, I think we need to see how far we can, you know, I like the idea of not being able to get a permit or losing another permit, you know, until, until it's remediated.
Yep.
I mean, if you can't do other, if you get a cease and desist, then maybe all your work should be stopped.
Well, one of the ways, maybe, because Mike O'Hara, the kind of violation notice, we may want to kind of put in that language, additional city departments will be notified of this violation.
Hmm.
Doesn't mean they're going to do anything about it, but at least you're threatening. And they know that the building department's going to be told, the planning department's going to be told, the, you know. To us, and within internally, we know that probably doesn't mean a lot, but the violator doesn't know that.
We could do that simply by CCing-
Right, copying, yeah, yeah.
Building Department, Board of Health.
Just copy the building department, copy the planning board, copy the, whatever, you know, boards apply. If anybody thinks that that's appropriate, it's at least a way of saying, hey, we're notifying the rest of the city that you have a violation.
And an easy way to do that is we scan a copy of the violation notice and put it in the record for that particular property. Then someone, someone is opening up, Open Gov is the software name-
Right, yep.
-for-
They'll see it.
-X, for 333, not to pick on Sheldon Road, but Sheldon Road as an example, it's going to pop up. So they'll be aware of it and say, hey, did you realize you have an outstanding violation?
So that's it, yeah, exactly.
So, folks, since this was going to be a one-hour meeting and we're getting close to the hour-
Yes, yep.
Good point.
I think we've, we've done a good job on the, on the protocol. What about Mike's list of, of items in his email letter of August 1st? Has anyone responded to him, to his questions there? Where he went through all the different examples of outstanding violations?
Yeah, I'd have to go back through.
Because he's asking specific questions. And I, I mean, I don't-
I haven't responded.
I don't know the answers to them. This, it seems to me that Mike O'Hara, you should make an effort to-
Yep.
-provide answers and distribute them so that by the time we meet again as a, as a commission, we'll be in a position to have thought about these and decide what to do next.
Mm-hmm. Okay, yep.
Because these seem like they are longstanding kind of, or at least most of them are longstanding kind of hanging items.
Yep, no, I agree. And, okay, I'll get going on that.
Thank you. Do you agree, Madam Chair?
I agree. Yes, absolutely. I, yes, I didn't, I didn't respond. So I agree that someone should respond, absolutely.
One.
I have one last question about the fines. Michael, do the fines, can we make it so the fines come to the wetlands protection account? Or does it have to go into the general fund?
That's a question I would punt to, and I'll ask a question to the auditor-
Okay.
-to Calvin. Because I think it may need to go in the general fund. But it's worth asking a question. Maybe you can just go directly into, like, notice of intent fees, directly into the wetlands protection account.
It would make the most sense. So we could use that money from the end of it.
It does. There might need to be a specific vote of the council to direct fines received under this, you know, wetlands ordinance to be directed to the wetlands protection account. It makes perfect sense, but I'm not sure if it can-
Okay.
-automatically go in there without some sort of council action.
Ralph, can, can I make one more point on, when you type up your revision of item seven, do you think it would be appropriate at the end to add Commissioner Donnelly's point that immediate court intervention will be filed after 30 days? So you kind of threaten them with that a little bit?
Yeah, I wasn't going to take that out, actually.
Okay, perfect.
I was just trying to make it, you know, provide a little bit of clarity as to under what conditions additional fines would be levied.
Okay.
And do you think this whole enforcement protocol will need to be reviewed by the city solicitor?
I mean, we, we could. I'm not sure how timely, I know Rennie is off this week, at least. I'm not, no, really, I mean, they're-
Yeah, no, I understand.
Why don't we make sure Tim gets to look at it?
Yeah.
So he can provide some comments. And then we can put it on the agenda for next month to follow up.
Okay.
All right. Well, I want to thank everybody for taking the time and to attend and for your clear commitment to the natural resources of Pittsburgh and public service. And call to adjourn this, motion and a second to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Someone.
No, second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And, okay, thank you so much, everyone. Meeting's adjourned.